Do we have one of the city council people? Charlie, okay, perfect. Oh, perfect, that's great. All right, thank you for our regular scheduled meeting. First business, we'll go do pledge allegiance. Councilman Cuevas, will you lead us, please?
Certainly, sir. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, it looks like we don't have a quorum, but a couple of the city, three city council people went to the Association of Washington Cities, and then two of them are online with us. So, we need to excuse a couple people. Who are we excusing? Okay, so, motion for councilmember Uwer and Harold.
Here, I'll make a motion for, to excuse councilman Mueller, loud, loud. Uwer and Harold from tonight's meeting.
Second, I have a motion by councilmember Rogan Steen and second by councilmember Cuevas to excuse councilmember Uwer and Harold. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? I know I at least heard one, so motion carries. At this time, we'll do citizen comments. It's period to provide opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter, including items on the agenda. We do have a public hearing, so if you're here for the public hearing, we'll hear those comments during that time. So, at this time, you get three minutes, and you can come up and address the council with your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Greg Laird. I live in Cadver, six inches from my home. Pinnacle U. Good afternoon. Can you hear me all right?
Yep, that's good, yes.
Okay. Again, I'm Greg Laird, and I'm the designated spokesperson on behalf of the concerned citizens who wrote to you about a year and a half ago. And in that letter, thirty of us, in that letter, asked for your help in remembering the late Bob Stanley and the gift that he made to our community. With me are several other members of that group. There's Mike Salmon's here, Steve Richardson, and Don Etherington. We're here today to express our heartfelt gratitude for all the support you have provided in financing and working with the Performing Arts Center to jointly produce a commemorative plaque that honors Bob Stanley. Bob Stanley's gift was a personal pledge of a million dollars to date toward the construction of our civic center. Bob made that gift in 1995, and it'd be worth about, worth more than $2 million in today's dollars. The late Wilford Woods would later write that our civic center was the miracle on Wenatchee Avenue, and that Bob's gift was crucial in making that happen. Bob Stanley was a prominent businessman, as you know, that owned Stan's Merry Mart on South Wenatchee Avenue, and he was a generous man who strove to give back to his community. In appreciation for Bob's gift, we promised him that Civic Center would be named after him and be called the Stanley Civic Center. And Bob died only two years after that. The importance of this plaque can't be stressed enough, and it's up there on the, on the screen behind you. It replaces the name Stan's Merry Mart, or Stanley Civic Center, excuse me, as a better way of honoring Bob's legacy. Thirty years have passed since Bob made that gift, and memories have faded, and the name Stanley Civic Center did little to remind the community who Bob was and the value of his gift. Now, with the understanding and full support, with your full support and understanding, we are truly keeping our promise to Bob Stanley. He could not be more, we could not be more pleased with how well the plaque has turned out. It will be permanently and prominently displayed in the common area shared by the city's new expansion of the Convention Center and the Performing Arts Center. We're planning a public unveiling, unveiling of the, of the plaque in the near future in conjunction with the Performing Arts Center's celebration of its 25th year anniversary. We'd also like to thank the city administrator Laura Gloria and city facilities manager Alyssa Schaefer for all their support and assistance. We work closely with Alyssa, and she was wonderful to work with. She contracted to have the, the project done, and, and it's getting done, and we're very pleased with it. We think it's going to be outstanding. The, the likeness of Bob is sculptured into bronze, and against that black background, it's going to stand out very well. It's going to be permanently embedded by the, the elevator that the, that the city has constructed for the PAC and its, and its negotiations. In conclusion, the plaque not only honors Bob Stanley, the plaque reflects the importance of recognizing philanthropy in our society and our shared commitment to honor those who have helped make our community what it is today. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate, I know you had some other people, and you went over time, so we'll allow everybody to have four minutes tonight. So, if you can reset to four minutes, I think that'd be appropriate for fairness for everybody. So, who else would like to come up to the city council and state their name and address? Tammy, will you make sure it's four minutes, or do three and then add a minute? That'd be great.
Is it okay to hand out?
You can just hand it over there, and we can get it later, or they can hand it to us.
Brian Campbell, 837 Jefferson Street. Good evening, mayor and council. This is a similar topic. We all, we all love the, the PAC, as I do. I do have a letter here to read that's from the owner of one of the main contractors that finished the construction of the PAC. And I'll just go, go right into it. It has come to my attention that Brian and Jody Campbell have been banned from the Performing Arts Center since September of 2021. That's when the Appelerians, as the booster organization for the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival, were attending the Apple Blossom Musical, Mamma Mia, at the PAC. All of the Appelerian tickets were booked through Darcy Christopherson at the Apple Blossom Festival office. The PAC changed their entrance requirements after the tickets were sold, but the Appelerians weren't notified of the change. The PAC required attendees to show their COVID vaccination cards before being allowed inside. At a subsequent meeting at the PAC, it was disclosed that Darcy Christopherson was notified of the change in entrance requirements, but she didn't notify the Appelerians, whose tickets she booked. Brian Campbell complied with the entrance requirements, but was asking why the Appelerians weren't notified of the change in entrance protocol. As Brian was searching his phone for a copy of Jody's vaccination card, he noticed that I was being denied entry because I didn't have my vaccination card on my person. My Appelerian date had already entered, and I began to panic when I was told I had to return home and obtain my vaccination card. I'm now 93 years old and was in distress when I couldn't communicate with my date about what was happening to me. Brian was concerned about my physical health and placed his hand on my shoulder and said, "This is ridiculous, come on." And we walked inside. We were both unaware that Jody followed us in. We passed Alex Haley, and he said, "You can't go in," and Brian replied, "You can call the cops." As we entered, I saw my date at the other end of the room and was immediately relieved. I'm very disappointed that the PAC banned the Campbells from their facility for helping someone in medical distress, but I'm grateful to the Campbells for helping me in my time of need. When Brian and Jody returned from their cruise where vaccination cards were required, a couple of weeks after the musical, they opened a letter from the PAC saying that they'd been banned. The PAC would only lift the ban if the Campbells apologized for what the PAC described as their outrageous behavior. The Campbells met with President Mike Salmon, Vice President Steve Robinson, and Executive Director Woody Lottz at the PAC to explain what actually happened. One of the PAC's sponsors and self-proclaimed prominent citizen had also sent a letter to the Appelerians and copied the Apple Blossom Board requesting that the Campbells be kicked out of the Appelerians as well. This same prominent citizen previously sent a draft defamation-of-character lawsuit against the Campbells to numerous people in the community and threatened to file it if the Campbells so much as mentioned his name. Steve Robinson did an investigation of the PAC incident, but never even talked to the Campbells or me prior to banning them from the PAC. The Campbells haven't been able to attend any of the activities at the PAC for over three years, and it's long past time for the PAC to explain how their actions were anything other than politically motivated. In 2005, Mayor Dennis Johnson forgave debt, reduced the PAC's lease payment from $17,250 to $1 per year. That action could be challenged by the regulators as a gifting of public funds. The annual lease payment is to be reviewed every five years in an analysis of the PAC's finances performed. The PAC is also required to provide a minimum of 2% of their receipts to poor and infirm persons and report results to the city on a quarterly basis. Are these four reviews and 80 reports available for public review? The city has forgiven hundreds of thousands in lease payments to the PAC, and with their outrageous treatment to a good Samaritan, it's time for the PAC's lease agreement with the city to be audited properly. And in conclusion, we'd love the PAC, and we want it to continue on, but with the potential gifting of public funds and their actions towards a good Samaritan, I think it's time they step up to the plate. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to come up for four minutes? Seeing no other takers. Our comment period has ended. We'll go on to our consent items.
Here, I'll make a motion for city council to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings and approve resolution number 2025-18 declaring certain personal property surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee and authorizing the Public Works Department to dispose of the personal property identified herein.
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Rogan Steen and second by councilmember Hornby for city council to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings and approve resolution number 2025-18 declaring certain personal property surplus to the needs of the city Wenatchee and authorizing the Public Works Department to dispose of the personal property identified hereon. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. We do have one presentation tonight, and Chief Brett, you brought somebody that's going to get up there also and help with this presentation, I heard.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. The good fortune of having our former Commissioner of Public Lands, Hillary Franz, here with me. Come on up, Hillary. Before I get into this presentation.
She didn't want to come up, so that's why I did that.
I know, I'm like, I'm trying to be shy. Get back out of the public eye.
So, just to recap for a moment, I'm so glad she's here. She was here to present to the North Central Washington Chiefs Association and the speaker at our Valley, our future wildfire symposium, but to brag on her behalf, this is the woman that revitalized the Department of Natural Resources firefighting force, reclassified firefighters as firefighters, and passed House Bill 1498, that all the diverse and quantity of air assets you see out here, we thank her for that. So, Hillary has some things she would like to brief the council on.
I'll be really quick. First, thank you for being here, thank you for serving. I sat in your role a long, long time ago. It's not easy, and I just want to say thank you to that. It is great to be back in Wenatchee. It's a beautiful city. My former chief of staff moved here from Seattle, so you must be doing something really right. But this year, I'll just be really upfront, it's looking like another bad fire season. July, August, September are looking really, really bad, if you haven't looked at the maps. The great news is we've made significant progress in actually getting on fires quickly and containing them. In fact, being able to keep 95% of our fires below 10 acres in the last four years in a row, which very few states, if any, can say that with the number of fires that we continue to have. The reason of that is, first, the coordination between our local fire districts and continuing to invest in our local fire districts, and also the close coordination with our state agency and the resources. Two is having adequate air resources and ground resources, which is due to House Bill 1168, which was that $500 million investment over eight years. And last was a rapid air attack based on House Bill 1498. The moment he puts that call in, our planes are flying. That didn't used to be the case. I'm going to say to you, the reality is both of those bills are at risk. House Bill 1168, just this year, was cut in half from the $125 million to around $60 million with the budget deficit at the state level. They need to hear voices from the local communities that are literally on the fire line and impacted by it. The second is House Bill 1498. Every fire chief in the entire state says it is one of the best laws ever passed that's made a difference. The reality is it sunsets next year, and it really comes at no cost to the city. It is all about saving lives and saving dollars, and we need to have local governments and local fire districts truly raising their voice at the state level to protect what we know is already working. We don't, can't afford to go backwards. Thank you.
Thanks, Hillary.
Mayor and council, I'm here tonight just to brief you on where the Wenatchee Valley Fire Department is, where we're going, and why we're going that way. I'm assuming I can advance the slides myself up here. Little recap of the jurisdiction here, we're down 211 square miles with 81,000 people, and that's a breakdown of how our jurisdiction shakes out as far as residential properties and the space. We still have 71% ag and open space, which is significant to our wildland environment. As the, the two, four, two former fire districts combined, we're now a large entity. That is our current org chart, and that looks impressive. We're still growing, and we need to grow. So, for orientation, that is a map of our jurisdiction, and to orient you from the top, that is Swacane Canyon and Rocky Reach Dam, where our jurisdiction begins in the north, and it comes down the Wenatchee side to grab Birch Mountain, the city Wenatchee number one and two canyon, Wenatchee Heights, Stamelt, Malaga, Clockum, crossing the river at the Trinidad train trussel, coming up the Douglas County side through Palisades, and all of East Wenatchee up to the rock, the rock outcropping here below the Badger Mountain Plateau. Pretty large jurisdiction to protect. We have a $25 million annual operating budget, 75 people on shift, and various support staff, two helicopters, and 65 pieces of apparatus out of 10 fire stations. Soon, eight of those stations will be staffed. So, our goal is to get to 80 to 90% of our population within four to seven minutes from time of dispatch to get care in your face. And to do that, we build fire stations in strategic locations to reach you in a timely manner. However, we also build fire stations and staff them for insurance purposes. For example, Rock Island is currently a staffed fire station, and if you looked at the metric of just call volume, it wouldn't warrant staffing. However, philosophically, we want to be there to get to our community in a timely manner, and we saved the community of Rock Island's residents thousands of dollars in insurance premiums by staffing that station. And now, their community is poised for development because of that station. Similarly, in Malaga, we are staffing the Malaga Fire Station September 1st, graciously with the support of Microsoft. That's funding three of the nine positions we need to do that. And again, the call volume doesn't warrant staffing that station, but the insurance premiums do, and it wasn't fair to the 5,000 people and 500 million in assessed value out there to pay exorbitant insurance premiums while the majority of our fire district benefits from the lower rates. In 2024, we responded to just over 6,200 calls. 275 of those are fires. Of the 275 fires, about 150 to 175 occurred during the summer in the fire season. We are dispatched to a reported building on fire on average every 38 hours within our jurisdiction. 65% of our calls are medical. We only respond on life-threatening medical calls. Ballard and Lifeline, our great EMS partners, handle both the advanced life support and the EMS calls we do not go on. In addition to traditional fire service deliveries, we also have hazardous materials team. We can mitigate our ag industry hazardous material calls and powder in courthouses, et cetera, without having to wait hours for a state team to be mustered and come in. Within an hour, we can mobilize Slant Douglas Grant County hazmat team members to take action to mitigate an emergency. We're the only fire department that has rope rescue capabilities. We have over 20 some rope rescue technicians, which benefits the whole region. Anybody that falls up on Saddle Rock, goes over an embankment in a car accident, we have the capability and tools and, and training to get them. We partner with the port and provide aircraft rescue firefighting, fire investigation, and water rescue. All the water rescue program, rope rescue, et cetera, they, we are not the authority having jurisdiction to provide these services. That would fall under the sheriff's office. However, the call volume has warranted us getting into these rescue services. We're having, we're having more people in the last few years drown than get trapped or die in a building fire. So, we have 29 water rescue technicians and a boat that we partner with emergency management with to deploy, and we're the full force multiplier for the sheriff's department. And it, it's our goal to always save lives and property, literally, in that order, save lives, including our own, protect infrastructure, protect personal property. The, the service we offer, albeit not the authority having jurisdictions to simply show up with the sheriffs on dispatch simultaneously and say, "We have these services, glad to provide them." And it ties in with the Chamber of Commerce goal to bring people here for tourism. We are advertising, "Come to Wenatchee, recreate our water, climb our mountains, et cetera." Yet, we lacked the ability to help people when they got in trouble, and they do. On the wildfire front, we have had great success here. Thank you, Hillary. Great success on the shirt tails of our Commissioner of Public Lands, and our approach to wildland fires is, as soon as we get the call, we obviously respond with our apparatus and personnel, but as soon as we get the call, we make the phone call and order air resources, hand crews, bulldozers. We have our own bulldozer, by the way, now. We make all these resource orders immediately, and that has been a key to our success. So, in layman's terms, who, who's familiar with mixed martial arts and fighting in the octagon, ultimate fighting? Yay? 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 I'm going to use the analogy anyway. So, in mixed martial arts, if you get somebody running right out into the octagon and does a flying Superman throat punch, that's air support. Takes the will of the fire away. However, that doesn't finish it off. You're dependent on dozers, ground crews, apparatus, people stretching lines protecting property to beat the fire into submission, choke it out, and be done with it. That's the layman's analogy on how we deal with fires, and it's worked extremely well because of what has been implemented on our behalf. So, where are we going? We have a current five-year strategic plan in place, and mayor, thank you for being on our strategic plan committee. That, in our strategic plan, we've identified becoming accredited. The community is growing, we're a large department, we want to have an outside, national, actually international, third-party accreditation process come in and evaluate everything we do, so that your next fire chief can stand up here and say, "We're doing these things because they are industry-best practices," and we can substantiate that. But what we need is, we are short-staffed, and we have the ability, we are blessed with the funding mechanism to increase our staffing pretty much right now if we wanted to, but the unknown is, we don't know how quickly or how much taxation our public would withstand and still want to support us. So, we're using our annual growth in assessed value to time our hiring, to incrementally hire, to use the economic dividend that comes with ever-increasing assessed value to make our tax increases marginal, ideally unnoticeable. However, we need this staffing, and I'll give two examples, as I stated at the Public Safety Council meeting. There's two metrics we're judged on by the state, RCW and performance standards. One of them is CPR, one of them is a residential house fire. We only have two people on our fire engines. Sometimes, we have a volunteer with us, of which we love, but that is sometimes. When you go into cardiac arrest for the best chances of survival, you need someone to breathe for you, someone to defibrillate you, and someone to do nonstop compressions. If you don't have three people, you're going to go without one. We're not going to give you air. That's the lesser of the three evils until after we can get shocks onboard, then we'll start with that and hope other resources arrive. Having that third person gives you everything you need to have the best chance of survival in a CPR event. And then, residential house fires, the national standard is four people on a fire engine. There's a law that's called two in, two out. You cannot engage in interior firefighting unless you have four people on scene. Two can go in, two are out, one's running the pump, one's the incident commander. The state of Washington gives you an exemption to that two-in, two-out rule if you have three people, and we show up at the mayor's house, and the mayor says, "Credible witness, my grandson is trapped in the house, down the bedroom to the right. If we have three people, we can immediately knock down the fire, go in, and make an attack and a rescue without waiting for anyone." Without three people, we are stuck, saying, "Well, mayor, as soon as, the next fire truck should be here in three, four, or five minutes, and as soon as they get here, we'll go in." That is not a good business model. We don't like that. It conflicts with everything we believe in and the whole reason we are here in existence. You lose the first room of origin in a fire in three and a half to four minutes. That room is gone, survivability is gone. So, we need to contain, control the air, and get water on the fire, and get in fast and aggressively search to save lives. That's why we need a three-person staffing model. Our trajectory is set up perfectly for us to go there. We have the funding mechanism. We need to renew it in 2030. We intend to hire 30 firefighters over the next, the course of the next few years, and that is going to give the community, the citizens, and the firefighters exactly what they need as far as deployment and staffing. That's where we're going, where we're at, where we're going, and why. Would love to answer questions.
Chief, are you telling me that when there is an emergency, the closest fire department will go? But then again, since I'm a driver out there and I see a fire truck from somewhere else approaching the scene, is that the, the help, the third or fourth person coming in?
Yes.
Because I'm saying to myself, "Man, that's our tax money. Why, why is there two trucks from far distance coming in?"
Yes, labor. We, there's only two people on it. So, if you're in an injury automobile accident, it, it takes more than two people to get you out of that car safely, keep your C-spine intact so you're not paralyzed. It's, it's labor, especially if you have to do extrication. So, when we get to a three-person staffing model, we'll be able to send one fighter engine on a lot of our calls. That will help with efficiency. And I did put a little bit of data up here on what it would cost to add the staffing, assuming our AV doesn't grow, about $16, $17 a year to get three firefighters.
Chief, how, I guess you're saying additional 30 firefighters over the next few years, but how many firefighters to reach that minimum three per engine?
27 would do it, but then we need to factor in.
So, that 30 is to get to that minimum three per?
Yes.
In all of our stations?
Yes. Throughout the jurisdiction. The summary, the great news to report, we have the ability to do this, we plan to do it, this is why we're going to do it, and we're just super blessed to have all the support of our electives throughout the jurisdiction, wonderful community support, and we feel like we're just standing at the three-point line sinking nothing but net.
So, where's your plan? Where's the plan? You said a five-year plan, so is it a five-year plan for 30, for 30 more? Your plan's going to be, because there's training problems too, I believe, and volunteers is like, nobody volunteers as much as they used to, so.
We love and take any of the volunteers we can get, and, and we do use them as a force multiplier. They're very hard to come by. It's vague in our strategic plan on the specifics of when we're going to add the staffing. It denotes that we're short and we're working on the plan. These are the numbers we need, and this is what we're shooting at. It's just the, the unknown. We, we wish we could get the engagement and the data from the public and, and have that level of known support of, "Please go hire this amount of firefighters. We're willing to pay 20 bucks more next year, and 20 bucks more the next year," or whatever that may be. But we're just sensitive to the public, the finances affect everybody differently, and we have to be careful because we're 100% dependent on this fire benefit charge renewing in 2030 and then six years from now. If it doesn't renew, we will shut down. We will have one station staffed in East Wenatchee and one staffed in Wenatchee, and we shut the lights off.
So you do an outreach?
Doing outreach, that's any of, that would be the, if you, any suggestions anyone may have of how to grab the engagement? At, when we were speaking at the wildfire symposium yesterday, they were doing this meta metric.
Oh, yeah.
What it was called.
Yeah, it's like a meta, yeah, it's
That.
Instant, uh, answers, I guess.
Instant answers, that, that was neat. It's, we have reached out to the best of our knowledge and trying to engage the public. No one comes to our commissioner meetings, and we take that as we're doing a great job. So, but, so we're just gonna be conservative and grow incrementally. Operationally, though, we, we can't onboard more than nine people in a year just because of what it takes to onboard them through the academy outfit, and train them, get them on the apparatus. So that kind of meters us in a good way. Moral of the story, Mayor and Council. We're doing great, we're loving it, we're poised for nothing but success. We need to renew House Bill fourteen ninety-eight. Again, I didn't touch on this, I was gonna talk about it before Hillary came up. Yesterday, we got dispatched to this fire out by the airport, Tenth and Nile. Ordered aircraft right out of the chute. We immediately got a helicopter up there. When the helicopter was up there, they suggested, we should probably get another helicopter. Called back, well, if we're gonna get another helicopter, add an Air Attack, which is a fixed-wing plane that coordinates the air resources. So we added Air Attack. Air Attack hops up, gets up there and says, well, let's get two scoopers on this thing too. So we have two scoopers, two thousand gallons apiece, two helicopters, Air Attack coordinating it. Our dozers plowing line on the backside. We have three alarms, the whole region's fire departments are here helping us. And that thing, that started at three twenty-five PM yesterday. Over, done, out within hours. The last person left was back at the station by eleven thirty PM. And that is our goal, just knock these things out hard and fast and be done.
You have sample stuff, Hillary, for the, how do we as a city council or a city to promote the House Bill fourteen ninety-eight and eleven sixty-eight? Can you send us, um, some?
Yeah, I mean, my only, yeah, I, I'd say first, definitely always contact your legislators, but as you know, uh, legislators, there's, you have three in this district and it's a bigger state. This, I think this year, because the entire state is under a fire risk for three months, the entire state, there is gonna be a lot of wake-up calls, and not just for local fire districts, but for the public. It would be very valuable for a letter coming from the city to the entire legislative body, to the Department of Energy Resources, to the governor about how important House Bill fourteen ninety-eight is, and also how important keeping that funding of House Bill eleven sixty-eight and how it's already made a difference. As I say, the only people responsible from us going backwards will be the people who are cutting the, the money and who are not continuing the legislation. Because we already know what's working, why would you stop on a path of success uh, to go backwards to one that wasn't fa-, wasn't succeeding and was failing? Raise your voices up, just like a public, thank you.
And look, to, to discapstone on that, many of us have lived here our entire lives. I've been in the Fire Department thirty-three years. Prior to Commissioner Franz coming into office, when you needed aircraft and you ordered them, you didn't know what you were gonna witness first, the second coming of Christ or the aircraft showing up. It was a fifty-fifty chance. And now, look at what you have. So we'll, we'll be on this one, we'll provide all our jurisdictions with outreach and templates and letters of support.
Can I just add, can I say one thing to that? I wasn't here at the beginning of Christ, I, I am old, but not that old. Uh, but, um, I mean, when I came in in twenty seventeen, we only had, the state only had eight, eight Hueys, they all fought in the Vietnam War, right? That's all we had for air resources. Last year you had forty-four. That meant we were able to blanket the state and be able, within fifteen to thirty minutes, get on any fire, no matter where it was in the state, to be on top of, not just with one resource, but often multiple resources like he just described for yesterday. And so part of what we've done is increased the number of resources at the ground and the air aviation level. But we've also, uh, gone and condensed the time. What might have taken the beginning of Christ or whatever, um, to, now is like, literally a call. That's how seamless the teams have become, local and state, that didn't exist before, but we can't go backwards.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor and Council, that's the end of, end of report.
Any other questions for the chief?
No, I just appreciate your effort into that, all, everything you do to keep us safe from fire and, and life.
Thanks, we appreciate it and love it.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you for keeping an eye on our city.
Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you so much, have a great night.
Thanks, Chief.
We'll go on to our action items.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Darcy Running, Utility Project Manager for the City Wenatchee Public Works Department. Sorry about the frog in my throat tonight. I'm here for the next two items. This first item tonight is, uh, for contract for AK Engineering and Forestry for a project you should be familiar with called the Pershing Street Stormwater retrofit. This project was very successful in planning through an ecology grant. We finished planning last year and closed that planning grant. Uh, with that effort, I was able to go after construction funding, and we were notified that we're getting that construction funding July first. Uh, so we'll be able to build this project in twenty twenty-six. So ahead of that effort, we have retained our engineer, they switched names. They were previously known as CPH Consulting. Uh, they have consolidated their company and they're called AKS, but we have the same engineering staff that's very familiar with our project, that's excited to take us from ninety to a hundred percent and will help us manage the construction. And this project will build stormwater facilities and also a little bit of water main that needs replaced on Pershing Street and the side streets in the area, uh, Woodward, Central Avenue, between Spring Water and Maple Street. Uh, this is also a known flooding area that is affected by the number-two canyon drain. So with our stormwater, it's very problematic. So we're really excited that we're gonna get a lot of water quality paid for by the Department of Ecology and also solve some flooding concerns. So tonight I bring this before you to ask for your approval to allow the city administrator to sign the agreement with AKS Engineering and Forestry to finish the design and manage the construction. Um, and the total value of that can, will be three hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. I would entertain any questions you have on the project or the contract.
And this is already presented to Public Works this past week?
Yes.
Uh, great job on getting this done. Uh, with that, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve, uh, an agreement with AKS Engineering and Forestry LLC, formerly CPH Consulting, for their engineering professional services on the construction phase of Pershing Street Stormwater retrofit project and authorize the city administrator to sign the agreement.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Rogan Stian, uh, for City Council to approve the agreement with AKS Engineering and Forestry Limited Liability Corporation, formerly CPH Consulting, for their engineering professional services on the construction phase of the Pershing Street Stormwater retrofit project and authorize the city administrator to sign the agreement. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All who oppose, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the second item this evening is also mine. Uh, this is for, just a time extension only for a project where, for FEMA generators. FEMA is the agency granting the dollars, and we are working through that contract. We have actually purchased those generators. Um, so things are moving along nicely, but we didn't do it in quite the time that they had. And so we've asked for a time extension. And this agreement tonight is to authorize the city administrator to sign that time agreement for one more year so we can receive those generators and put the contract out to bid this fall to get them installed. Uh, we don't anticipate needing more than a year, which, then this contract would wrap up by May thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. And all of our water, uh, critical infrastructures, including the treatment plant, will be backed up by generators in case of a power outage.
Where does funding come from?
Uh, it's under the, FEMA is the lead, but it's under the Shalan County Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program. And we applied under Shalan County.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve the amendment to the legal contract agreement for Hazard Mitigation Grant five-three-nine-five-dash-one-two-R for Generators for Critical Water Infrastructure Resilience. City Project Number two-three-zero-seven and authorize city administrator to sign the agreement and signature authorization form.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Atkinson for City Council to approve the amendment to the legal contract agreement for Hazardous Mitigation Grant fifty-three-nine-five-dash-twelve-R for Generator, Generators for Critical Water Infrastructure Resilience. City Project Number twenty-three-zero-seven and authorize city administrator to sign that amendment and signature authorization form. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All who oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for your hard work on these.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jessica Shaw, Deputy Public Works Director, Utilities. And tonight, for your consideration, I have an inter-local agreement for our stormwater infrastructure, which is located on Shalan County PUD property. Um, we have had an agreement in the past with the PUD, it was from two thousand and three. And so city staff, PUD staff, city legal team, PUD legal team have been working together over the last year or so to bring this new master agreement. The previous agreement was a bit outdated and had some inaccuracies. And we've also made a lot of improvements to our infrastructure and have some plans to do future improvements. So this inter-local agreement, this new inter-local agreement really helps us to be able to move forward. Um, one unique aspect of this is it is a master agreement, and then we'll have individual permits that are issued to the specific sites where we have stormwater infrastructure on PUD property. There's about five different sites, they're mostly located around the confluence of the Wenatchee River area and Old Station area. And so one unique thing about the action requested tonight is I'm, I'm requesting approval of the master agreement as well as authorization for the city administrator to sign the specific permits that'll be issued once we are good with the master agreement. And that way, I just don't have to come back five more times, or again, every time we make changes. Um, we do anticipate that, uh, we will work on those permits right away for the existing five sites. And then we are looking at adding two additional outfalls with the Confluence Parkway project that will be two additional permits as well, so eventually maybe up to seven. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the master agreement and.
So we already saw this at Public Works, but, um, anything to make your life easier and not come back to us all the time for little things is great, so good job on that and solving all little problems.
Thank you.
Yeah, Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve the inter-local agreement regarding placement of stormwater infrastructure with Public Utility District Number One of Shalan County and authorizing the city administrator's signature on the agreement and on permits issued for specific city stormwater infrastructure under this agreement without further council approval.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Rogan Stian and second by Councilmember Hornby for City Council to approve the inter-local agreement regarding placement of stormwater infrastructure with the Public Utility District Number One of Shalan County and authorize the city administrator's signature on the agreement and on permits issued for specific city stormwater infrastructure under this agreement without further council approval. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All who oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Alyssa Schaefer, Facilities Manager for Public Works. I'm here tonight to present for your consideration the revised capital project budget along with change order number twelve to the contract with Abshire Construction Company for Pro-, City Projects twenty-two-twelve. We've officially moved into the finishes phase of the project. And as you may have noticed, driving by North Wenatchee Avenue, it's quite the hustle and bustle of activity. I've mentioned in the past, the original project budget had a contingency of just three point six percent of the original contract value, which is considered low for a project of this size and complexity. Industry standard is typically between ten and twelve percent. The project bond was paid out in January of twenty twenty-four and has been accruing interest since then, which is good news. Tonight, we are requesting an increase of three hundred thousand dollars to the project budget or adding an additional two point one percent to the contingency fund. This will bring the total contingency to five point seven percent, and this increase will be fully covered by the interest earned. Uh, there will be no impact at this time to capital reserves. Change order number twelve is outlined in your packet. It totals a hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, and it includes a thirty-one calendar day extension. The additional time accounts for some design complexities and a few unforeseen conditions that we've encountered along the way. Uh, with this extension, the new substantial completion date for the contract is September tenth. This assumes everything stays on track. And as we know, in construction, every day is a new adventure. Um, the project is now approximately eighty percent complete. And if this change order is approved, the total contingency used to date will represent three point nine percent of the original contract value, so it's still well below the industry standard. Uh, with that, I'd answer any questions that you might have.
So three point nine percent, but we're projecting it'll end up being five point seven percent, but it's all getting paid because of our interest, interest in the account. What kind of account is it? I'm, I'm, how's that, can you explain?
Yeah, most, it's, uh, spread out like all of our other pooled cash that we have. Um, some of it is invested with, uh, long-term, uh, long-term US bonds. Some of it's just at the state pool. Um, all of those are earning kind of right around three, three and a half percent. And so since that sixteen million of bond proceeds were dumped in there, it's been earning that, uh, three, three and a half percent. Um, so that's given us kind of the, the extra cushion for the contingency, contingency fund or contingency. Um, plus if, um, I think we still will have another couple hundred thousand from the interest above and beyond what, uh, what is being asked for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Just gives us a little extra buffer to make it to the end.
But we're gonna make it, right?
We are gonna make it, oh, for sure.
Just a comment, thanks, thanks for all your hard work. I know you're literally out there every day. I, I know that, and I appreciate that.
I see you're still.
Yeah, every day, so, thank you.
So long, long-term, um, I know we are increasing the contingency, which means that we have gone beyond the budget.
That's correct.
Just make that clear. Um, but long-term, we will, um, recoup those funds with events and taxation and those kind of things, so just clear picture. Um, with that, I'll make a motion for the council to approve, uh, project, uh, to approve and amend project budget for Project Number two-two-one-two, approve change order number twelve with Abshire Construction Company and authorize city administrator's signature.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Cuevas for City Council to approve the amended project budget for Project Number twenty-two-twelve, approve change order number twelve with Abshire Construction Company and authorize the city administrator's signature. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, motion carries. Thank you, we'll see you tomorrow there.
Good evening again, Mayor, City Council, Jessica Shaw, Deputy Public Works Director, Utilities. I'm here on behalf of Mike Hodgson, our wastewater treatment plant supervisor. And so I have the next two items regarding our, our wastewater utility. So the first item here before you is a capital project budget, uh, for Project Number twenty-five oh-nine. And this is one of the things that has kind of grown out of our industrial wastewater symbiosis effort is to turn our biosolids into a product that is more marketable, and that is to get it certified as a fertilizer. And to do that, we need to have a storage building at our dry-in-bed facility that will protect it from rain. Uh, so we are, this was not, and the reason why we're bringing the project budget tonight is it was not included in the twenty twenty-five budget, but we'd like to get started on that. Uh, we're also gonna add in some improvements to the existing. We're also going to add in some improvements to the existing drying beds. There were some old drainage systems that aren't working. It's a very small portion of the project. The main part is really just the fertilizer storage building. The funding for this project is from our sewer utility fund four oh five, and we do have funds for this project in that budget. But it just wasn't, like I said, included in the two thousand and twenty five budget. So hoping to get started on it sooner rather than later. And I'm happy to answer any questions about this project.
I just think it's really cool that we're able to make like a fertilizer and, and then also instead of shipping our waste, it should save, save us some money as well. I just think it's so cool and hearing Mike talk about how potent the fertilizer is, is pretty, pretty cool. Anyway.
Yeah, it's a great product. We're very excited to be able to sell it.
So we're not the only ones that do this, is that correct?
We are not. This is very similar to Tagrow, which is produced by Pierce County at their Chambers Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant and Soundgrow, which is produced by King County.
Okay. So we're not recreating the wheel, we're just trying to jump on it and maybe have a revenue stream from it, so.
Exactly.
Yep.
I was just gonna agree with the team on just the importance and the value of the work that our team is doing at the city of Wenatchee. You guys are pioneering. I know there's a couple other sites that have already started this work, but it is, it makes me really proud to be part of the city of Wenatchee and know that you guys are not waiting to jump on the bandwagon. You are a pioneer in north central Washington. So thank you guys for being willing to step up and do this work.
Thank you so much.
Excited to see what we're gonna call our product too. But with that, I'll make a motion for city council to approve the capital project budget for project number twenty five zero nine wastewater treatment plant drying bed drains and storage building.
Second. We have a motion by council member Rogan Stan and second by council member Hornby for city council approve the capital project budget for project number twenty five oh nine wastewater treatment plant drying bed drains and storage buildings, building. Any other discussion or comments?
Top and I would like to be on the naming committee.
Yeah.
You are on the naming committee.
Maybe we can use first names basis.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right, you ready for the next one? See wastewater can be fun.
I apologize.
All right, our next item is less exciting, but still very important for our wastewater treatment plant. This is an amendment to existing contract we have with RH2 Engineering for Services, Engineering Services at the treatment plant. And in particular, we have a task order we'd like them to work on to help us to replace some aging pumps. Unfortunately, we can't replace them in kind, and so we need a little bit of engineering work. There's also some electrical upgrades that are needed, and so we would like to use their services. So this will also extend, this fifth amendment to the contract will extend the contract and provide some additional funding. Again, this is from our sewer utility, the four oh five fund. In particular, this comes out of our kind of operations and maintenance budget and our professional services, and we do have funding to cover this additional amendment. So I'm happy to answer any questions about our return activated sledge and telemetry system improvements.
Sounds real exciting, but why can't we use in kind?
So the problem is, is these pumps are so old that we can't buy the exact same pump anymore. They're configured differently. So there's gonna have to be some replumbing and then, of course, because of our older electrical systems, there's gonna have to be some upgrades to that as well. So not as easy as just buying one off the shelf and plugging it in.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Your Honor, I'll take a motion for the city council to approve the fifth amendment to the contract with RH2 Engineering, Inc., for general services related to the wastewater utility and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract amendment.
Second. We have a motion by council member Cuevas and second by council member Atkinson for city council approve the fifth amendment to the contract with RH2 Engineering Incorporated for General Services related to the wastewater utility and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract amendment. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jessica. So that ends our action items. We'll go to a public hearing. Uh, let's see, I'll call the public hearing to order on the matters of two multifamily tax exemption agreements. One with ten twenty one Walla Walla Av Limited Liability Corporation, one with Fifth Street Twenty LLC. Staff will first give their report, followed then by public testimony. I just ask you to speak in the microphone clear and state your name and address, and all comments should be addressed to the hearing body and should not be of personal nature. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. Okay, Glenn, are you ready?
I am. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm excited to have two applications before you for consideration tonight that can help facilitate the construction of low to moderate income housing units. If you recall, the city council made changes to our multifamily tax exemptions, providing additional emphasis on providing those low to moderate income units. So we're pleased to have two before you this evening. The first item is for the city of Wenatchee to enter an agreement with the Walla Walla Avenue LLC at ten twenty one Walla Walla Avenue. The resolution would authorize issuance of a conditional certificate of acceptance of tax exemption associated with the construction of a hundred and twenty five residential unit project. This would be for a twelve-year property tax exemption that requires at least twenty percent of the housing units to be rented and sold at an affordable price to low and moderate income households. The application proposes to provide twenty five rental housing units to low and moderate income households. The applicant submitted building permits on May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five. These are complete applications and a building permit application is currently under review. If authorized, then we would have, we have certain requirements that would have to be verified that the project's complete prior to issuing the final certificate of tax exemption. And then we have an annual report that verifies that they are consistent with agreement that would be required as well. There is not a fiscal, direct fiscal impact to the city budget on this. The city will receive an annual property tax on land where the completed project is located. The amount of property tax for the land is anticipated to be greater than or equal to the current assessed value of the property. Would happy to answer any questions at this time or after public testimony.
Can you talk like a couple of the code changes and that we, we've done to, to get this to work? I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of put you on the spot a little bit because this is some, is this one of our first ones that's gonna allow us to actually have lower income at twenty percent? Is that a?
Under, under our new code, yes, and it's, it's a great step forward. Before, we were allowing for multifamily tax exemptions for properties that we're not providing affordable units. And under our new code, it's eight-year for ten percent reduction. But this is a twelve-year for twenty percent of the units rather, for low to moderate income households. So it's, it's a huge benefit for the community. I, I think one thing that's really interesting, one of the recent housing studies that analyzed our multifamily tax system said that, you know, they were skeptical that we would get people applying for this. I think Wenatchee's such an attract, we've got a lot of positive things happening. People want to come here. I'm excited that we're getting these applications under these new rules. It shows that we're, we're attractive and people still want to come here even with this heightened level of restriction. They find that it still has value to them to apply for it, and we're getting a twelve-year benefit for low to moderate income units.
Is this our first one? Sorry.
Correct.
It is, okay. You probably said that, but I, I just, it's, it's just exciting. It's like it's, it's, it's gonna work, right? And, and obviously there's money, they can make money. They wouldn't apply for this unless there's money being made and nobody really knew, you know, we heard other comments in the past of you couldn't make it. And obviously, these two believe they can make money.
And, and we've had some really good discussions with both of these applicants, and they, they both feel that they can still be profitable in doing so. So we're really excited to see folks apply for this under this new provision.
It's a, it's a good sign. Sorry, other questions? And we're having twenty-five, is that what you said?
Yes, twenty-five units.
Okay.
Hi, just a comment, Glenn. I think it's great to have this mixed economic demographic in the same location too. I think there's all kinds of positives that come from that, so.
Any other staff?
Nothing further from staff.
Okay, this time we'll have public comment. If you come up and state your name and address and we'll give you three minutes. Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Hello again, Brian Campbell, eighteen thirty-seven Jefferson Street. I'm here in support of this program. I think the, the property tax exemption for the affordable housing is a wonderful opportunity. And I know under Glenn's tutelage, you'll have, will have no problem with, with the program. One thing I did want to bring out is I'm, that I'm concerned about was concerns that I brought up before. In two thousand and twenty-three, we had this same program or similar program, it's been adjusted, but we had a program for eighty-four affordable housing units. And then at the, basically the last minute, the developer was allowed to come in and request that they be let out of that contract. And we lost potentially eighty-four affordable housing units. And maybe those families are part of the five hundred plus homeless we have out there now, I don't know. But my big concern is to make sure that this thing is managed properly and there's not a backdoor exit for a developer. Because the last time this happened, it actually increased the developer's property value about seven million dollars, and the developer immediately put his property up for sale. So want to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again where we lose eighty-four affordable housing units and a developer, one developer gets a seven million dollar check. So that's my biggest concern, I want to make sure that this program, I'm sure there's made, adjustments have been made for that, and I'm sure that won't be a problem. And I'm certainly in support of this, of this program because we really do need to provide some affordable housing for, for our people here. So, thank you very much.
Anybody else in the public? And we do have somebody online that would like to.
I have a question.
Okay. The person online, if you'd like to, three minutes, would you like to make a comment? Okay, gave everybody a chance there, anybody else? Now I close the public hearing? Or no, we don't close the public, what do we do? Need some help, Danielle, our attorney.
The city council can come and ask questions of staff if they have any.
Okay, do we have any more questions? Councilmember Navarro Gomez or Atkinson, any other questions for Glenn? No.
Nope, not at this moment.
Okay.
Then the public hearing is then closed.
Okay, perfect.
And then action taken.
All right, we will close the public hearing. And if there's any action to be taken.
One at a time?
One at a time.
One at a time, okay. Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to adopt resol- the resolution number two zero two five dash two zero, authorizing the execution of a twelve-year multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement with one zero two one Walla Walla Av LLC.
We have a motion by council member Hornby and second by council member Rogan Stan for city council adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty, authorizing the execution of a twelve-year multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement with ten twenty one Walla Walla Av Limited Liability Corporation. Any other discussion or comments?
I just want to, I know Glenn, we arm wrestled over this a lot last few years, finally came up with something that I was really focused on is making sure that if we were giving a, a tax exemption, that they were helping us partially solve a housing need that we had out there. And so thank you for all your effort. I'm really excited we have one of these about to be passed hopefully and moving on to the next one. So thanks for your effort there.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? So can we just go, public hearings close? Help me out, sorry.
The public hearing for that action item was closed.
Okay, got it.
So.
So we'll do two public hearings?
Mm-hmm.
Got it, okay. So now it's opened up for another public hearing.
Correct for that second action item.
For the second one, okay, thank you.
All right.
Same rules, Glenn.
Thank you, I'm back. So we have another application before you for consideration. This one is with Fifth Street Twenty LLC. And this would authorize the resolution, if approved, would authorize the issuance of conditional certificate of tax exemption associated with the construction of a twenty unit project at thirteen twenty-three Fifth Street. This is also a twelve-year limited tax property exemption requiring at least twenty percent of the housing units to be rented or sold at the affordable to low to moderate income households. The application proposes to provide four rental housing units to low and moderate incomes meeting the criteria of code. The application for a building permit was submitted on February twenty-eighth. It's a complete application and it's in project review. And then upon completion of the project, if this is authorized, then we would enter into a final certificate of tax exemption, just as with other projects as, as described, and then doing the annual reporting for verification that the terms of the agreement are followed. And happy to answer any questions you have on this project.
Hearing none, I'll turn it over to the public for three minutes.
Hello, Brian Campbell, eighteen thirty-seven Jefferson Street. I was kind of in the same vein with the mayor on this one. I thought they were kind of both being done together, so to not, to lend my support for the first one and not this one, I thought that wasn't appropriate. So I just wanted to say that this is another project that is certainly what we need in the city of Wenatchee with affordable housing, and I think it will be another great project. So I just wanted to give my support. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Anybody online, Tammy, this person wanna talk on this one? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and we'll go on to any action item.
Okay.
Your Honor, make a motion for city council to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five five dash nineteen, authorizing the execution of a twelve-year multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement with Fifth Street Twenty LLC.
Second. We have a motion by city council member Rogan Stan and second by council member Navarro Gomez for city council adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, authorizing the execution of a twelve-year multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement with Fifth Street Twenty Limited Liability Corporation. Any other comments or statements? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. We'll go to reports. I'm gonna be real quick. I was at the public facility district and we're going through the bonds and seeing when, try to come up with a plan of trying to see dates for paying those off. So that's been kind of an interesting process. It'll take six more months to actually kind of come up with hopefully a, a goal and a plan to show the public. Of course, during the time, it's a public meeting, so the public can hear as things are going, progressing, but that's all I'm gonna have. are going, progressing, but that's all I'm gonna have. Council, we'll go, Councilmember Navarro Gomez, do you have anything for us?
No, I don't have anything beyond the amazing opportunity of being at AWC. Thank you to the City of Wenatchee for allowing us to attend this training, and it has been just very enriching, so thank you guys for that opportunity.
Learn lots and report back. Councilmember Atkinson?
Yeah, I would just concur, but Brad, I, I got to sit in on session on tax increment financing, you know, so that was pretty exciting, and it's been a good, it's been a good meeting, so we're still working on the museum a little bit here, so, yeah, that's what I got.
Great. Councilmember Cuevas?
I don't have anything, but I want to comment that I want everybody to be safe and have a fantastic Independence Day, and to remember that fireworks are illegal. Please do not use fireworks.
I do know that county's closing some roads, and we all kind of had in all of our social media reminders, and that was kind of a group effort with City of East Wenatchee, Wenatchee, and Shalane Douglas County, so, and of course, the fire. Councilmember Stan?
Nothing to reveal, but I did want to thank the gentleman for bringing up the Performing Arts Center and stuff, and I, at our last LTAC TBA meeting, I heard that North Forty did a film called Miracle on Wenatchee Ave that also pays tribute, so I think that's really cool that we have a place like that in town.
WDA Downtown Association is firing on all cylinders. Link transit buses are on the way. Slight price increase with some tariffs that may or may not come into effect, but excited to get those new electric buses for our community, and yeah, we're in labor negotiations, so it's going well.
Okay. Anybody else? Laura?
Tammy?
Okay. Brad, you're good? All right? Always, that's what I like. Yeah, it was interesting when Charlie said he got all excited about the finance, I was like, well, that, that's interesting.
He can, he can take on the next TIF district.
Yeah, I'm sure of that. All right? Entertain adjournment?
Oh, yeah. You know, I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Roger Stan and second by Councilmember Atkinson to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Thank you guys for being online tonight. Have fun at your conference.